Okay, we will call to order the public hearing scheduled for 5:45 PM. For the proposed amendments to Section 38.021, 38.022, 38.025 of the Waterbury Code of Ordinances related to the centralized procurement system as submitted by Paul K. Prinruski Jr., Mayor of the City of Waterbury. If you wish to address this board on this topic, I ask that you sign up with our City Sheriff Steve Conway. You'll have five minutes' time. Please state your name and address for the record, and I will give you a one-minute warning. Thank you. Mr. Conway?
First speaker tonight from 1400 Mirren Road, Martin Spring.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Martin Spring, 1400 Mirren Road. As far as the public hearing goes, I've been talking to some people about this earlier, and, you know, for some reason, I don't really have a lot of information on this. I really wish there was more information available for us, the citizens of Waterbury. And I have no idea why. I'm sure members of the Board of Alderman have a lot more information than I do, and that's appropriate. But I know as far as, what I looked it up, and I try to understand, this is 38.021 and 38.022 is competitive sealed bidding, and I believe that's correct in my assertions on that. And the other one is 38.025, net small purchases. Now, competitive sealed bidding would obviously mean we've got to be more competitive in when we're bidding out things, because I know Alderman Jack Elsa brought something up pretending to, something alluding to that a while back ago, I believe, on the Public Works property. And that, I'm not here to speak about that, because I'm not involved with that, but I just want, you know, I believe that's what the question was. He was concerned about the amount of money that's being spent and the bidding process that's going out. And also, you know, I understand that, you know, things change right now, and everybody keeps going back and saying, "Oh, it's all COVID. COVID's got a lot to do with it." Maybe so, maybe it was, maybe it doesn't. But the bottom line is, you know, a lot of these contractors are coming in, and I don't know if they're LLC or whatever, if they're connected with anybody, and if they are, we have a right to know, okay? But nevertheless, the bottom line is, if we do have this sealed bidding, I don't know what the process is. It comes in, the City of Waterbury, if the Corporation Council gets a chance to look at the sealed bidding, or the citizens of Waterbury, if you will, if we get a chance to look at it, and I don't see why we have that opportunity anyways, because we're not members of the Board of Alderman. And I think the mayor's doing a good job, and he's upfront and honest about things, and I appreciate that, and he knows I do. And, you know, I appreciate everything you guys do on both sides of the aisle, both Republican and Democrat. But the thing is, you know, we have this competitive sealed bidding. I'd just like to get more information on it, because I don't think there's enough information on this. So that's how I feel about that. And I know it's a public hearing. But again, I'm glad that the mayor is here, and I'm glad Mr. Elsa brought some questions out, and he said he hasn't still gotten any answers, and hopefully he will, and hopefully we will as citizens of Waterbury and taxpayers, okay? As far as the other one, 38.025, small purchases, I'd imagine that's probably some small things that the city's got to acquire and buy, and I don't really know. Again, nobody gave us the specific details on it, if you will, and this is something I think that we should, you know, learn more about. Because again, you know, it's nice that we have public hearings, Mr. President, ladies and members of the Board of Alderman, Mr. Mayor, but, you know, it should be more detailed about what's going on in the City of Waterbury. I'm not saying anybody's trying to pull a fast one on us. You know, we know that some shenanigans going on many, many years ago in previous administrations,
and One minute.
That's unfortunate, okay? But again, when you have a competitive sealed bidding over here, this is something that we should understand about and know about, especially when it says it's competitive, okay? And the other one is, as far as the small purchases, it's something, again, not to repeat myself, I have a bad habit to do that, but I'd just like to see more of an open process. That's what I want to see. And I know the mayor would agree with me on that, and I commend him for that, because I've known Paul for a long time, and I, you know, we go back many, many years, and he's always been a good friend of the family, and I appreciate everything he does. So, and I appreciate everything everybody does here, both Republican and Democrat. I mean, it's nice that we're like a big family, and we all work together. We do it for the betterment of the City of Waterbury and the citizens. So, you know, I know I'm going on over here, so hopefully we'll find more information on these biddings. Thank you.
Mr. President, that's the last speaker tonight.
Okay, with that, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll start the regular Board of Alderman meeting at 6:00 PM. Okay. We will call to order the regular meeting of the Board of Alderman for Monday, March 24, 2025. If everyone will please stand for the Pledge Allegiance and a silent prayer. And I ask that you, since our last meeting, ask that you keep in mind Officer Vincent Lombardi and his family. Officer Lombardi passed away after a brave battle of cancer. It's a tremendous loss for the Waterbury Police Department, and it's a tremendous loss to all the kids at PAL who he mentored and look forward every day going to teach and to mentor for it to be better members of our community. So, thank you.
Alderman Elsa. Alderwoman Cavallo.
Here.
Alderman Dorso.
Here.
Alderman Hunter.
Here.
Alderman Lopez.
Here.
Alderwoman Martinez McCarthy.
Present.
Alderman Mosley.
Here.
Alderman Nujam.
Here.
Alderman Rinaldi.
Here.
Alderman Rodriguez.
Present.
Alderman Salvio.
Present.
Alderman Taladine.
Present.
Alderwoman Weaver.
Here.
Alderwoman Zimmerman.
Present.
Alderman D. G. Ovencarlo.
Here.
Fifteen present.
Okay, we have a quorum with that. The next item on the agenda is public speaking. If you wish to address this board, I ask that you sign up with our City Sheriff Steve Conway. You'll have a five-minute time limit. I will give you a one-minute warning. Please state your name and address for the record. Mr. Conway?
First speaker tonight from 1400 Mirren Road, Martin Spring.
Martin Spring, 1400 Mirren Road. You know, I was going to say, it was so nice last meeting. There were so many individuals here. I really wish there were more people to come to the Board of Alderman meetings, because I know, I show up, this fine lady here shows up, and some other individuals that come once in a while. But it would be nice if more people could come, and I don't know what's keeping people away, because, you know, even at various boards and commissions that I go to and I'm involved with, the same thing, you know, people complain about this, that, and everything else. Even at the Waterville Community Club, which I'm the president of, they complain about so many things in the City of Waterbury, but yet they don't show up at the meeting, and I don't understand. Because the last time we had a meeting, we had some police officers coming in, and they were telling us about some things going on in Waterbury, Waterville. And, you know, this is something that I always wondered, what's going on, and why can't we get this cleared up? They said that out of ten people that they stopped, and I don't know if there's any police officers here today, there's only probably one individual that has license, registration, insurance, that's all legal. Now, I don't know if these people are illegal or not, or they belong in this country or not. Why are they running around with misuse of place, and no license, no insurance, no registration? And that really hurts us, because Karen and I, and people like us, and a lot of people in this room, we pay our taxes, and we pay our bills, and we do what we can as good Americans. And I commend the Waterbury PD for going after these individuals. I couldn't care less if they're illegal or not, the bottom line. If you're driving on the road, and you're illegally driving on the road, okay, then you should be pulled over and stopped. And that's something that we should look at, because these people have no right driving on the road and causing chaos, and whatever it is. I mean, it's just not right. It's, to me, it's wrong, and this should be cleared up like ASAP. Again, I commend the Waterbury PD for doing a fantastic job, but they can only do so much, because they say a lot of times, they go to court and everything, and the judge gives them a slap on the wrist, and I can understand that, because if you're here illegally in this country, why would you be getting a slap on the wrist, you know? But that's my opinion. So another thing I want to say, rent and taxes, paying high rents, many of us renters have a lot of skin in the game, especially if you rent as high. Because high taxes, my landlord said, the reason why, we have several years ago, we do have it, and if we had a lower mill rate, he said he'd be able to lower my taxes about $200, $300 a month, and that would be fine, thinking about that, you know, that's probably about $1,200 a year, I'd say, instead of Karen and I. So I thought that was something good. So maybe in the future, we could think about getting a lower mill rate, because I know the budget's going to be coming out, and we're going to have department heads coming in, and members of the Board of Alderman. I'm not on the Board of Alderman, but if I was, I should be. I come here so much. Anyways, the bottom line, I would definitely be asking every department head if they could make any kind of specific cuts, consolidate, do what they can to save the taxpayers' money. And we're all taxpayers, and that's something we should look at. Also, the other thing I was looking at, the special needs programs, wouldn't it be nice if we could keep these individuals here at home? Now, I don't know what ages they range from, they could be young kids or adults, but the bottom line, it's an awful lot of expenditures on this taxpayers, the City of Waterbury, to send these individuals out to Trumbull, wherever they're sending them. I don't understand, we have a school over there, St. Mary's, we just acquired that building by St. Mary's Hospital. I don't know the name, I think it was St. Mary's School. And that's something, maybe we should retrofit that building to try to keep these individuals here at home. I think that's something we should look at in the near future. And, you know, I don't know if we have to go through Corporation Council, whatever, or go, maybe ask some members of the Board of Education here. When they come before you guys, I would ask them that question. Again, I, you know, I'm limited what I can say and do. I'm not on the Board of Alderman, with all due respect, but I would definitely ask a lot of different questions, okay? Another thing is civil lawsuits against the City of Waterbury. There's some amounts and a lot of money, which the city has no choice of pay, pay the settlements. So why not, in my opinion, because I wouldn't mind doing this if I had a lawsuit against the city, which I wouldn't want to, but if I did, and they said, "Mr. Spring, we're going to levy a tax on you," okay? And that would probably have to come through the Corporation Council, the Board of Alderman, and I know the mayor's an attorney, I don't know
One minute.
Do that or not, but I think that's something you could do to, you know, recoup some of that money. I mean, if somebody's getting $25, $30 million, you have a right to say, "Hey, look, you know, cough some money up over here. Give us some money back." I don't see nothing wrong with that. I really don't. Because if I got that kind of money, I'd be more than happy to give you 5%, 10%, 15%. The state takes it when you win the lottery, right? So why not? Okay? And prospect holdings. Only hope the City of Waterbury has a better outcome on this, and I commend the mayor for what he's doing. He's trying to do the best he can, and we all got to work together on this, because, you know, we got to get our money back on this, and this is something that I think that we should all be concerned about, because especially with Waterbury Hospital. Lord knows, we only got two hospitals in the City of Waterbury, and, you know, they have some big headlines coming in on the Sunday paper. I believe it was Karen told me the Sunday paper. So if we could turn around, and we could see what we can do as individuals
That's time.
And work together with the mayor and his administration to recoup some of this money, with members of the Board of Alderman, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Next speaker from 45 Pierce Street, Sharon Samoska.
Sharon Samoska, 45 Pierce Street. I have a couple of quick information or question pieces. Again, please direct me to someone on that railroad tracks. Why is Bristol Street still being blocked? It's been intermittently blocked now since August. I tried to take my husband to the doctor the other day. The road was closed. Please help us find out why and when it's going to stop. I'm asking you to try to prevent the speeding vehicles coming off Route 8 from the southbound side at St. Patrick's Church. You have three lanes, one that goes left, and two that go straight. The problem is those two straight lanes, if you're on the outside lane, you don't have much of a hope when people speed by you, and they speed through there even at red lights. Please try to do something. The other question I have is the parking meter faces in the parking lot out here. If you come If you come around 3:00, 3:30, 4:00 in the afternoon, you cannot see those faces. I spent a good 15 minutes just trying to get my money in there and get the machine to work, so perhaps you can change those faces to a different color. Now, the bulk of my concern tonight is about Waterbury Hospital and the situation that it's such a negative impact by the sale of that property, by the changes that are there. Is it going to be sold with the premise it must remain a hospital or just a piece of real estate? There's a huge difference and the paper is not at all clear. And I was told by someone, oh, the paper's wrong. I don't know that. I want to know from this office, from you people, what's the real, true answer? Because it is impacting my life as well as many others. And even if it is to be a hospital, how many months will it be before it's up and running again? And what happens to a person like my husband who's a vet? I have to take him or the ambulance has to take him to the nearest hospital, which is Waterbury. They then will decide whether he can go to the VA and then the VA will pay for it. Otherwise, we don't know what's going to happen. And he could be sitting in that ER for a day or two days, the way some of the patient care is occurring right now. What do we do about this? Who do we call? Transportation is high. Our physician is one of the ones who's not even sure he's going to stay in Waterbury because of that hospital closing. Where are we going to find another one? And don't forget, physicians close the office at 5:00 and they also shut down their phones, leaving patients and families vulnerable. We have to figure out what to do. We have to figure out where to go. And with one hospital, where do we go? And I also ask, there are impacts upon every single town that borders us. Southbury, Oxford, Middlebury, Nogatuck, Walgett, keep going. Can our mayors get together in a concerted effort and work with this situation to make it better? To do something, A, so this doesn't happen again, and B, so that citizens in our town are not held accountable to pay extra taxes for the money that's being lost at this place? This week, I was told ambulance calls were delayed, one, two hours. Times at the ERs are horrible in waiting. A person with a special trial cancer treatment is not to be put in a room with other infectious patients. The person was put in a holding room between two infectious patients. That's not good medical care. What is the role and what can be the role of our city government, our city Department of Health, our state Connecticut Hospital Association, our state DPH? Isn't our DPH here to protect us, to give us care when care isn't right? Can they intervene? Can they do something? Is SMH, St. Mary's, able to fill the void? Because I'm hearing that that's doubtful. Can our state and our city work together for a solution? In other states, where I come from, the hospitals, at least some of them are called county hospitals and they are.
One minute.
Run and organized and monitored by those people. How much money have we wasted trying to keep this place up to snuff? I ask you. It's a lot. And it just goes on and on. Please, let's do something better. And in general, I'm gonna call your attention to the demeaning and mistruths that media sources are posing for senior citizens and veterans and for people who respond. I was posted, when I put up a post about caring for our children and education and how upset I was about it, the post said, what are you, a blank welfare person? Go get a job and get real. And I responded back appropriately. I said, even if I'm crying, it's because of the opportunities that children will miss.
That's time.
I don't think that that's at all fair. And let's be careful what we say and how we say it and help us say it better.
That's the last speaker, Mr. President.
Okay. The next item on the agenda would be the approval of the minutes from the March 10th, 2025 public hearing and regular meeting of the Waterbury Board of Aldermen. Alderman Dorso, is there a motion?
Motion to approve the minutes.
Alderman Martinez McCarthy.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Alderwoman, any discussion, Alderwoman Weaver.
Um, I have the minutes. Um, I have.
I'm sorry, can you speak into the mic? I'm sorry, Alderwoman.
Item 3, 4, 7, 8, 9, and unfinished business, 1. The person that seconded is the person that on the minutes said that was approved. I approved it and seemed to second.
Okay. So just to be clear, I'm gonna go over it with you again. You said 3, 4. What were the numbers, 3, 4, 7?
Oh, 4, 7. All of the intergovernmental, 8, 9, and the unfinished business, 1.
Okay. So Alderwoman Martinez gave the first, Alderwoman Weaver gave the second out of all those motions.
No, it's the opposite.
Other way around? Okay.
Yes.
You gave the first.
Yes.
So let the record show that those corrections are made for the minutes. Are there anything further? Any further discussion besides those adjustments? Hearing none, all those in favor approving the minutes as corrected, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, motion carries and the minutes are approved as corrected. Mayor? Nothing, okay. Before we recess into committees, you have item number 12 in front of you, was a placeholder. That's the amendment number 1 to the interminable agreement between the city of Waterbury and the borough of Nogatuck. So that is the packet that the placeholder was for. We will be pulling items number 10 and item number 13. Those items will be pulled 10 and 13. And item 19, it is fixed on the agenda, but item 19 earlier in the week was going to intergovernmental. Item 19 is just moving to the Finance Committee where it should be. So with that, we will recess into committees and we will start with Finance.
I call the Finance Committee to order. Item number 7. Your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve a refund for Trinity Solar 7 McKee Place, Cheshire CT 06410 in the amount of $2,295 for permit 273 Purdy Road, permit number 2025-0000478. 86 Kalen Court, permit number 2024-0003918. And permit 2024-0003927. 234 Lakeview Avenue, Waterbury, Connecticut. Permits canceled, no work done. Sunrun Attention A/P 775 Fero Lane, Suite 200, San Luis Obispo, California, 93401 in the amount of $585 for permit number PR 2024-0003719. 34 Circular Avenue, Waterbury, Connecticut. Permit canceled, no work done as submitted by Frank Baker Acting Building Official. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve the refunds is read.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number 19. Your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve the 2024-2025 Tax Suspense Report Summary. The complete suspense report is, can be located under the BOA section of the city's website, under BOA's Full Agenda section with a meeting date of March 24th, 2025, as submitted by Frank A. Caruso Jr., CCMC Revenue Collection Manager. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
A second?
Second.
Is there discussion? Alderman Alsa.
I want to ask some questions, if anybody can come up and explain some things on this, possible? Yeah, introduce yourself.
Uh, Frank, I'm the revenue collection manager.
Okay. Question I have, some of these are quite old and some of them are not that old. Why does the list span such a huge amount of time?
A lot of the old stuff is real estate that we're putting in, it's lots and everything that are uncollectible. Like, they've gone out to collections and we haven't been able to do anything. Suspense really doesn't stop it from being collectible. Suspense just moves it from an active rate book into a suspense rate book. It just cleans up the records, but they're completely collectible for 15 years. So we can go back and collect. It doesn't mean anything about, suspense doesn't mean they're uncollectible. And the cars, with our contract with TaxServe, the current, the 2023 grant list are put into suspense and then we turn it over to Tax Serve on April 1st. So they have the full, it's really easier for accounting to have it in suspense because then we pay them the 15% that we collect on it.
At what point in time do we take action to take possession of that property?
What property?
What does it take for us to go after the property to get the money back?
Well, we're always in collections.
Pardon?
We're always working on collections, that's.
But I mean, some of these are older and some, you know, is there a deadline, like after three years, after six months, after, you know, whatever?
Well, they fall off the grant list after 15 years, but we're always trying to collect. That's, a lot of these, a lot of the real estateers, like when the developers develop, there's little pilets and little landlocked pieces of parcels that, you know, the developers should really combine them when they develop. So these lots, you know, they're never gonna get, like, no one really owns them, the developers are gone and they have these little tiny lots or landlocked parcels that just stay there. You know, we don't really have a, we don't really have a way to get them off the ground list. If the parcel's good, we could turn it over to the land bank, but if it's, if not, it just stays there, like if the land bank doesn't want it.
Couldn't we offer to an adjoining landowner or something?
Oh, we do, we try that, right. But we don't, the only way for us to do it is through auction. And it costs about $3,000 to auction a property. So unless we have a real, unless we, a neighbor or something really makes an inquiry about it, we usually don't put it up to auction.
So we just let it sit there?
Well, I mean, but it costs $3,000 to put it up for auction and then if it doesn't sell, then we eat the cost.
You have the money.
Do the, so the taxes do not accumulate once you put it on this?
Oh, no, they continue to, suspense.
Interest and everything keeps going?
Everything keeps going, yeah. Suspense really doesn't do anything other than move it to a different, you know, different section.
Thank you, I just needed that clarified.
Any further discussion? Yes, Alderman?
Thank you, Frank. Always a pleasure to see you. I've been here long enough to know how this works, but I'm just curious. Who determines the reclassification under tax suspense? Is that a state or is that a accounting term?
Well, it's really, yeah, well, it's a state statute that every year we have to, we have to put together a suspense list.
Okay.
So it is state statute, but.
So that's the title that it's, the municipality's given to reallocate those, okay. You know, just wondering, it just sounds like we're suspending.
Well, that's, yeah, suspense really isn't a good term because it really doesn't.
Right.
It's still collectible, it's still accrues interest, everything's still.
Right.
You know, but it's just, suspense really isn't a good term for.
Yeah, just wondering.
Sounds like it comes off, but it really.
Right. It sounds like we're canceling and, you know, we're just sort of saying, oh, you know, we're, forget about it, we can't collect it.
Oh, no.
I understand, but I was just wondering if, you know, the terminology, but maybe be something so we can change it ourselves or something.
No, it's really state statute.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Frank.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Standing Committee. Your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve the Director of Finance to make refunds to taxpayers representing overpayment, payments of tax bills in the amount of $27,391.13 as submitted by Frank A. Caruso Jr., CCMC Revenue Collection Manager. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve the refunds.
Second?
Second.
Is there discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.
Okay. I call to order the Intergovernmental Committee meeting, starting with item number 1. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve a contract between the city of Waterbury and JA Rosa Construction LLC under RFP number 8303 in the amount of $343,000 for one exchange environmental remediation as submitted by David Simpson, Director of Public Works. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Alderman Rodriguez.
Good evening, David Simpson, Director of Public Works.
How you doing today? Thank you for coming. I see that we had other people put in for this bid and that was the lowest that we got for 300.
That's correct.
For 343. They, it says right here, we have, they have 90 days to finish the project?
That's correct also.
And then if they don't finish on that time, they start giving us $1,500 per day.
That is also how the contract is written, yes.
Okay. And KBE are the ones that are gonna be in charge of seeing that it's being done, if I'm correct.
So KBE, under contract with the city of Waterbury, is serving as the project manager for the facility at One Exchange Place? And this is one of those projects that is under, that will be under their supervision or control?
Now, I imagine that when they did their search of how much they're gonna charge for this project, I'm putting my bet that they came with a final number and then they're, I understand that sometimes when they start taking things apart, things come up, it's the nature of being in Waterbury and all these buildings. Do you see this number going up or you think this can be probably the, you know, they're professionals, so they should be known that they, they're looking for everything.
I'd like to be confident that that's a good number. JA Rosa has done quite a bit of work for the city of Waterbury. KEB is very qualified in overseeing this as we prepared the bid specification, but there are also unknowns with some of what's gonna happen with this.
And if they find something like that, let's say they find something, now that 90 days extends to another number of days to get this done?
I would hope that it's not gonna extend the time, it might change the cost.
Okay. Thank you so much for your time.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Sure. Any further discussion on item number 1? Thank you. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number 2. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve a contract between the city of Waterbury and Silk Town Roofing under RFP number 8335 in the amount of $621,075 for one exchange exterior and site improvements as submitted by David Simpson, Director of Public Works. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Alderman Rodriguez.
I should have told you to stay there.
Again, it's David Simpson, Director of Public Works.
Is this project's gonna start before the private, the other people to start or they're gonna work tenually together?
They're gonna work simultaneously.
Okay. So that roof is expensive. Okay, so, um, that roof is expensive. Question with that, um, the other bidders was the, this was the lowest bidder that we had for that project? And how many other people had bidding on this project for that roof?
I'm sorry, did I misunderstand? You asked about the elevators? The elevators was a different contract. This is for the roof.
The roofing, yeah. How many people?
There were two bidders.
Two bidders for this roofing? And he was the lowest?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you, appreciate it.
Any further discussion on item number two? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion passes. Item number three. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve a contract with Paladin Drones, Inc. in the amount of $192,000. The city was awarded a state grant in the amount of $1 million, which would be used to fund this purchase as submitted by Kevin Switz, Lieutenant Department of Police Services. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Alderman Rodriguez.
It's not really a question, I just wanted to tell you guys that I think this is necessary. I seen it, I was part of when they had it. Are those the ones that they had at the division when they were doing the demonstrations for the drones?
Yeah, Lieutenant Kevin Switz, yes.
Okay, yeah, I see that, I saw the, the way that you guys are going to manage these drones. And I think in a city like this, it's necessary. So I just wanted to applaud you guys for making this happen. Thank you so much.
Thank you, any further discussion on item number three? Thanks.
Thank you.
Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion passes. Item number four. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve an application for $3,048,000 for the Connecticut DOT's Local Transportation Capital Improvement Program for the completion of streetscape improvements on North Main Street and South Main Street as submitted by James Nardozzi, Executive Director, WDC. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number five. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve an engineer agreement under RFP number 8132 for engineering on-call services between the City of Waterbury and Kleinfelder Northeast, Inc. as submitted by Salvatore Di Porzio, Project Manager, DPW. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number six. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen not disapprove of the following appointments to the Waterbury Land Bank Board of Directors as submitted by Paul K. Peranuski, Mayor, City of Waterbury. Those appointments by the mayor are Daniel Lauer. These are all April 7, 2025 to April 6, 2028. Daniel Lauer, Joel Becker, Robert Polito, Margaret Smith, appointments by Democratic members of the board.
Excuse me, just the, you said the 28, those guys aren't the first four, not the 28, just?
Oh, you're right, my mistake. The, under the appointments by the mayor, Daniel Lauer, April 7, 2025 to April 6, 2026. Joel Becker, April 7, 2025, April 6, 2027. Robert Polito, April 7, 2025 to April 6, 2027. Margaret Smith, April 7, 2025 to April 6, 2027. Appointments by Democratic members of the board. Goddess Groulin, April 7, 2025 to April 6, 2028. Appointments by Republican members of the board. Fred Ludkey, April 7, 2025 to April 6, 2028. And appointments by agreement, appointment by agreement by Democratic and Republican members of the board. Dr. James Gatling, April 7, 2025 to April 6, 2028. Can I get a motion to not disapprove?
Motion to not disapprove.
And a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number eight. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve a purchase and sale agreement with redeeming love tabernacle of praise for the acquisition of 417 North Main Street, Waterbury, Connecticut, for $15,000 to incorporate the vacant parcel into the Martin Luther King Junior Park as submitted by Michael LeBlanc, Director of Finance. Can I get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
And a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Alderman Zimmerman.
Thank you for recognizing me.
Good evening, Michael LeBlanc, Director of Finance.
Hi, Mr. LeBlanc, how are you? Um, can you just give us a brief recap of the history behind why, um, this property is, we wanted by this property?
Yeah, so in, uh, preparing the, uh, the design specifications for the improvements to the Martin Luther King Park, it was discovered that, um, the adjacent parcel, a very small parcel, was not actually owned by the City of Waterbury, it wasn't a component of the park. Um, and upon further investigation, um, we identified the owner. Um, previously, this board approved, uh, moving forward with either acquisition of property through purchase, if we could negotiate a purchase price or through eminent domain. Um, and fortunately, uh, we were subsequently successful with, uh, being able to secure the property through purchase at the amount of $15,000. Um, this parcel, again, was, was thought to be a part of the park. The design plans incorporated this parcel. Uh, it provides for an expanded lawn recreation area as well as being able to wrap that area of the park in a fence, um, aligned along where the road is. So this parcel, um, if you can envision this, you had the park, you had this parcel, and then you had the road. Um, so it was a matter of being able to encapsulate the full area into the park.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion on item number eight? Thank you, thank you. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion passes. Item number nine. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen set a public hearing for April 21, 2025, 5:45 PM in these chambers for the purpose of receiving public input regarding a proposed new ordinance concerning automated traffic safety devices as submitted by Paul K. Peranuski Jr., Mayor, City of Waterbury. Can I get a motion to set the public hearing?
Motion to set the public hearing.
And a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The public hearing has been set. Item number 10 has been withdrawn. Item number 11. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve a professional services contract for design and construction documents of the rehabilitation and renovation of the historic Chase Building under RFP number 8287 between the City of Waterbury and Friar Architects, Inc. as submitted by Ronald Casella, Vice President of Operations and Construction, WDC. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Alderman Rodriguez.
Ron Casella from WDC, Your Honorable President and Members of Board of Aldermen.
How you doing?
Good evening.
Uh, these $2.4 million are going to be bonded?
Uh, yes, yes.
Yeah, and they have, uh, how many days to complete this project?
We have 7.25 months, 217 consecutive calendar days. Uh, 217 consecutive calendar days, 7.25 months, um, for their design, which will be in conceptual, schematic, design development, construction docs, ready to go out to bid.
My question to that is, as the, the scope of the work, is that a reasonable amount of $2.4 million?
Uh, yes, and we, we've got competitive prices, we had five bidders. The project is broken out into, uh, four phases of the work. So you have conceptual phases, which is broken out, schematic design, which are the drawings around 60% complete, design development drawings around 75% complete, and then construction docs 100%. Uh, for a total of, of $2.4 million. So each phase of the job is, is broken out for the dollar amounts to do the designs. Um, it's a restoration project also, so it's not like a new building where you just design brand new. There's a lot of exploratory work, there's a lot of, um, work that has to be done inside to make these drawings, to make sure, uh, rooting of ductwork, electrical. So there's a lot of upfront work that, um, is done on a renovation project such as this. Uh, so it's, the price, if it was a brand new building, it would be a little differently, but on a restoration job, we felt that the, the price was competitive and, um, they can, they can do the job.
I was just trying to hear you, but I know the, the microphone was not the greatest, but, um, so you're saying that all this scope of work with all this planning, uh, it comes out to $2.4 million that taxpayers are going to be putting forward?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mayor?
I just want to, you, this is, the 2.4 is part of the 30 million overall project that has already been approved for bonding, this is the first part of it. So the design phase, which is necessary, and then the rest of the project will go through. But it's not additional bonding, the 30 million has already been approved.
Okay.
What you're going to have to do now is approve this contract and then the construction contract and the way through. So you'll get, approve who gets the $30 million, but this is not additional money on this project, just so that's clear.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any further discussion on item number 11? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number 12. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen set a public hearing for April 7, 2025, 5:30 PM in these chambers for the purpose of receiving public input regarding the First Amendment to the intermunicipal agreement between the City of Waterbury and the Town of Nogatuck for development of properties in Waterbury and Nogatuck as submitted by Paul K. Peranuski Jr., Mayor, City of Waterbury. Can I get a motion to set the public hearing?
Motion to set the public hearing.
And a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The public hearing has been set. Item number 13 has been withdrawn. Item number 14. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve a contract between the Waterbury Health Department and Worldwide Travel Staffing Limited under RFP number 8247 for the provision of temporary nursing agency and public health services. This contract is funded by the general fund payroll as the agency is only used when there is an absence which must be filled as submitted by Ashling McGuckin, RN MSNMPH, Director of Health. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Alderman Zimmerman.
Thank you for recognizing me. Hi. Ashling McGuckin, Director of Health. So I'm just looking for the next five agenda items, they seem very similar.
They are.
Are they the same, just different companies?
Agencies, but for the same services.
Okay, do we have a shortage in our, since we're using these to fill in absences and we're using our payroll, do we have an opportunity where we need to hire within your department? Are we short-staffed? Or are we, is this just people calling out, like we have excessive callouts and injuries and?
We don't have excessive callouts or injuries. Um, we are nurses and there is a national nursing shortage. So this is to supply nurses for school nursing as well as public health nursing.
Do you know how many nurses we're short, how many in the full-time positions we have?
Right now, we have six vacancies among the nurses. So between the vacancies that are currently being covered long-term, um, and then long-term absences such as if someone becomes pregnant, needs to be out for FMLA after the delivery of their child or bedrest, you know, as prescribed by a doctor, um, the majority of nurses are women and so there's the potential for that.
And then when I look at these, the services seem very similar. So we're using five different agencies to, for the pool?
Yep.
So to speak of people, all right, thank you.
Currently, we have, um, four nursing agencies, um, two of which are going to continue with this second iteration of the contract.
And we have one new? Four current, one new, right?
Two current and three new. There's five agencies being used.
And? So cost-wise, should we look into hiring? Well, you're saying there's a shortage of nurses, got it?
Yeah, we, we hire, we hire as much as we can.
All right, all right, thank you.
But there's just not the volume of nurses out there to respond to, um, the need. The, the increase in the nurses' salary, their contracts, um, improved the ability for us to adequately hire for nurses to fill some of these shortages. Um, we did experience a huge wave of retirements during the pandemic, so, um, there was a shortage created by that. A lot of people have left the profession as a result of the pandemic, so there just isn't the supply that there used to be. So where we used to be able to rely on two agencies, um, the last time we put this out to bid, we came back with four agencies. We found that even with that, there's days where we can't get the coverage that we need. We do get the coverage, but, um, we don't have as much flexibility to say, um, you know, pick and choose who we want from the agencies. So we just feel like having five to choose from gives us adequate coverage. But again, we only use them as needed.
Right, thank you for explaining that, appreciate it.
Any further discussion on item number 14? Thank you. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number 15. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve a contract between the Waterbury Health Department and the Nurse Network for the, Nurse Network LLC for the provision of temporary nursing agency and public health services. This contract is funded by the general fund payroll as the agency is only used when there is an absence which must be filled as submitted by Ashling McGuckin, RN MSNMPH, Director of Health. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion passes. Item number 16. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve a contract between the Waterbury Health Department and ProMed Staff LLC for the provision of temporary nursing agency and public health services. This contract is funded by the general fund payroll as the agency is only used when there is an absence which must be filled as submitted by Ashling McGuckin, RN MSNMPH, Director of Health. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second.
Second.
Any discussion on item number 16? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion passes. Item number 17. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve a contract between the Waterbury Health Department and Delta T Group Hartford, Inc. for the provision of temporary nursing agency health services. This contract is funded by the general fund payroll as the agency is only used when there is an absence which must be filled as submitted by Ashling McGuckin, RN MSNMPH, Director of Health. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. And item number 18, your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve a contract between the Waterbury Health Department and AAA Nursing Care LLC for the provision of temporary nursing agency and public health services. This contract is funded by the general fund payroll as the agency is only used when there is an absence which must be filled, as submitted by Ashling McGuckin, RN MSN and PH Director of Health. Can you get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Alderman Rodriguez.
How are you doing?
Good evening, Ashling McGuckin.
Just thinking through all this that we are proving. Just got a simple question. Is it efficient to hire nurses in-house or through these agencies like this?
It's, it would be more efficient if we could be fully staffed with our own employees.
And it will be costly, less costly than, okay.
But we don't, we don't spend more. We only hire agency, we only use agency nurses when there's an absence. So the absence, use of the agency is predicated upon the absence. So it's a one-to-one. We're not.
Yeah, because now you're paying for the person to be absent and the agency, okay. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on item number 18? Mr. Mayor?
I just want to be clear, and I thought I was, I just want to make sure. This is not a matter where we are not hiring the nurses we need because we don't want them. It's that we can't get them.
Yeah.
If we could create nurses, we would hire them because it's more efficient to do it that way. But there's just not enough. And there's not enough in the agencies, which is why we need five agencies instead of one, because the broader pool makes it more likely that we'll get people when we need them. But if we could hire them, we would, so.
Now, if, I'm sorry, if we, can we hire someone from that agency to work for us? Or is a, there's a close, you know, some paper that says, you know, we can't hire them or?
For whatever reason, they, you know, chose to work for the agency, but I think once they come in, there is a requirement that for a while, we can't steal them basically.
Okay.
They would be prohibited from coming to work for us for some period of time.
Gotcha. Thank you.
I would also note, there, we've had really good luck with the agency nurses that we use from the two agencies that are remaining with us contracted. And we, we try to curry favor with them at every turn to encourage them to come over to work for the city. But the flexibility that an agency nurse lifestyle presents and the paycheck is really hard for the city to compete with. The ability to work the days that you want to work is really attractive, you know, for, for nurses, especially who are younger in their career.
Yeah. Well, appreciate it. Thank you for that information.
Thank you. Any further discussion on item number 18? Alderman Weaver.
Just, most of the time, when you, these nurses are hired, if you want to hire them, you have to buy their contract though?
It depends. Each, each agency has a different contract with the nurses that they hire. Some of them require a buyout, some of them require a certain amount of time with the agency before they can work outside or with, with what they would consider as a competitor. So there are provisions. So they, as employees, are required to manage that process independent of us. But we do let them know that we're not trying to interfere with their existing contract with their employer. We just would like to come over to the, come over to the, go, come on our team.
Yeah, they have to work so many hours before they.
Exactly. They have a contracted number of hours or we wouldn't buy them out of their contract, as would happen in private industry, but if you were a hospital, you could potentially buy someone's contract to get them to come and work for you. But we don't do that here.
Any further discussion on item number 18? Great, thank you. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion passes. Under unfinished business, item number one, your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve the proposed amendments to section 38.021, 38.022, and 38.025 of the Waterbury Code of Ordinances related to the centralized procurement system, as submitted by Michael Ponzillo, Deputy Chief of Police, Department of Police Services. Can you get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Alderman Rodriguez.
Mayor or? Can you explain a little bit of, you know, I know some people said that they haven't heard what's the difference of what we're doing here for the, to change this and the charter?
So this would be an ordinance that would put in place the framework to allow us to do effectively red light cameras, ultimately speed cameras and maybe noise cameras as well. But the first phase, as you know, the legislature approved a year, two years ago, the ability to put in red light cameras. We, this ordinance kind of backs that up. At this point, with the ordinance in place, we're going to finish going through an RFP process to get the cameras in place. We're limited to the number that we can do by state law, which I think is about 10 for the city. We're limited into, as to where we can put them. There's criteria to meet for the intersections, how many you can put in any section of the city and all of those things. So we're working that through right now. What this would do would allow those cameras to go in and to automatically, as you, if you run a red light, it would take a photo of your license plate, generate a ticket that would then be mailed to you and come out from there, so.
I had, I had, people had the question, if we're going to put these cameras through in like schools, close to schools and stuff like that?
There's a criteria that looks at where there's accidents that are occurring. You're limited to how many you can put into a particular neighborhood. You have to look at the demographics to make sure that you're not profiling. There's a whole number of different things that have to go into place to do this. So whether they end up near schools, you know, will, at some point, the next phase to this may well be putting similar types of cameras onto school buses themselves, so that cars that now run past school buses that are stopped would get the same kind of a ticket that would get generated.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You want to fix it?
Yeah, I should clarify. Sorry, it said Michael Ponzillo, Deputy Chief of Police, but it was submitted by Mayor Paul K. Perenisky. My mistake. Any further discussion on unfinished business item number one? Alderman Zimmerman.
I do have one more question, Mr. Mayor, if you can. If, if it's a plea out of state from like Oklahoma or wherever, does it, the same thing happen? Can we still?
Yeah, it'll still generate the ticket. You'll be able to mail it out because the tickets get mailed out. So it'll still generate the ticket. If they pay it or don't pay it, if they ever come back again, you know, it depends. I would assume Oklahoma may well be a rental car, so probably get back to the rental company. But yeah, you'd follow up on it the same way.
Thank you.
And I'll just add too, that the whole plan has to go to the state of Connecticut DOT in order to be approved. So not like we can just lay it out. It has to go to the state, they approve, and it comes back to us, so.
Just have one more question.
Alderman Rodriguez.
When she said about the out-of-state, are we going to be in the national, because I think there's a national program that even if you take the ticket, you don't pay it to us and you get another ticket in your town, in your state, it comes ours too at the same time, like the license?
No, no, it won't happen, no.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion on unfinished business item number one? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. I'll enter in a motion to adjourn the Intergovernmental Committee.
Motion to adjourn.
And a second?
Second.
Any, all in favor?
Aye.
Hold on one second.
Sure, please, come on up.
So unfinished business, number one, is going to be the, we're fixing it right now, the proposed amendments to sections of the procurement. So hold on one second. Okay, so we're fine. It's, we, Alderman Tajalde read the correct amendment, said Chief Ponzillo, who's, it was submitted by Paul K. Perenisky Jr., the mayor of the City of Waterbury, but somehow we got on a topic of red light cameras, which was not even read. So, so if you want to ask any further discussion on the actual, did you adjourn already?
Yeah.
We did.
Okay. There's no other further comments out. Okay, so.
On procurement.
Yeah, well, so now we're talking about a threshold of procurement for sealed bids, right?
That's what we should have been on. That was the topic we should have been on, so.
Can you, can, that's not what was read. I mean, unless that was somewhere else.
He did read that, but at the end, he, he is.
He has it right in front of him. It's, it's, Ruben, yeah, Alderman Rodriguez has it. It says it was submitted by Michael Ponzillo, but it was not. But the section right before it is the procurement, centralized procurement system. So right ordinance, wrong name.
All right, I mean, I have a point of discussion and I want to vote again because.
That's what put you on the red light camera. It's for the, it's for the sections of the procurement, right there. See it all?
I mean, can you read it again?
Okay, so I will, yep, re, I will call the Intergovernmental Committee back to order to talk about unfinished business item number one. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve the proposed amendments to sections 38.021, 38.022, and 38.025 of the Waterbury Code of Ordinances related to the centralized procurement system as submitted by Mayor Paul K. Perenisky Jr., Mayor, City of Waterbury. Can you get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Alderman Zimmerman.
Yeah, sorry, I guess I was hearing things. My apologies. Who can, so my question is, why do we want to do this? And I saw that it was because of inflation, but I was just trying to understand the process and the manpower because it seems very labor-intensive, but I'm not familiar enough with it. So what are, what's the whole?
Broadly, this is the answer. As you recall, the, these provisions probably date back to 2003, 2002, 2003, when we redid the procurement ordinance because of a lot of the history that Waterbury had had prior to that. And so there were thresholds put in place, what, where you could walk into a store and buy, you know, small items without going through any kind of a procurement process, right? You get recurring bids that occur with stores. Then there was a process for the next level of purchases up to $2,500, where you had to call and get a solicitation to be able to buy it. And you worked your way up to, you hit, I think, $10,000, at which point you had to go out for public bidding, the whole full-blown bidding process. The reality is that 25 years ago, those numbers made sense. They were probably even conservative for then, but given the history, people were being very conservative. Over the last 25 years, what's happened is this has become much more labor-intensive because for $10,000, you can now go out and get three quotations to try to buy something versus a full-blown bid. You go up to $25,000 and over, now you have to do the formal bid, publish it in the newspaper and go through the whole process. So the idea was to build some flexibility in, to recognize the fact that inflation over the last 25 years has driven these numbers up and that these numbers are equivalent, are probably still a little bit conservative to where we started back in 2003. And they are closer, more closely in line with what other municipalities do as far as their procurement process. So the idea is we just shifted the, the limit. So when you can go to the store and buy something, when you have to call or get some, you know, electronic bids, which is much more informal, and when you have to do the full-blown bidding process. Does that make sense?
It does, yeah. I wasn't in support of this before, but that's why I'm asking some questions. So from a department standpoint, if you don't mind, I assume you're the director. Manpower-wise, like, how many people, I'm looking at the procurement department in our budget and it looks like we have two people. How many people do we have in the purchasing department?
Right, we have.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, just, excuse me, just your name for the record, I'm sorry.
Kevin McCaffrey, Director of Purchasing. And to your question, there's myself, I'm the Director of Purchasing, and I have, there's an Assistant Director of Purchasing. So there are two people in the department that are capable of, of carrying out the, the role of, of purchasing. I also have two admins, two secretaries.
How is your workload? I mean, are we, is it unbearable? Like, should we?
Well.
I was in procurement. I was always stressed out.
I'll just say, between 2014 and 2024, our workload has increased 43% based on the fact of how often we have to go out to bid for things. In comparison, Bridgeport, they have six purchasing individuals that can handle the purchasing job. So I'm just saying, we're, we're kind of equivalent to Bridgeport, but they have six people to our two to handle the job.
Okay, and do you think this is going to lighten the load a little bit?
That's part of the intention, but overall, I mean, Public Works Engineering Bureau of Water have been very vocal. I mean, they buy a section of pipe and they're, they're over the $2,500 immediately. I mean, it's just gotten kind of crazy with the way prices are now. We really can't spend a whole lot without automatically triggering having to go out to bid for things. So we're just trying to get back with.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on unfinished business item number one about the centralized procurement system? Great. Thank you. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Well, almost. I'll enter in a motion to adjourn the Intergovernmental Committee.
Motion to adjourn.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, we are adjourned.
Okay, with that, we'll return to the regular order of business. Following items are on the consent calendar. Items number one and two are on consent to approve. Items three, four, and five are on consent to approve. Number six is on consent to not disapprove. Item number seven is on consent to approve. Item number eight is on consent to approve. Item number nine is on consent to approve a public hearing for April 21, 5:45 in these chambers. Item number 10 was withdrawn. Item number 11 is on consent to approve. Item number 12 is on consent to approve a public hearing for April 7, 2025, at 5:30 in these chambers. Item 13 is withdrawn. Items 14, 15, 16, 17, and 18 and 19 are on consent to approve. Unfinished business item number one is on consent to approve. Alderman Dorso, is there a motion with respect to the consent calendar?
Motion to approve the consent calendar is read.
Alderman Martinez McCarthy.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Are there any additions or deletions to the consent calendar? Alderman Alsuff.
I request that item number one, two, and 11 be removed from the consent calendar.
Motion on the floor is to approve the consent calendar as read, minus items number one and two and item number 11. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. The motion carries and the items on the consent calendar are approved. With respect to item number one and two, the chair would recognize Alderman Tajaldean, the Chair of the Intergovernmental Committee. Alderman Tajaldean.
Item number one, your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve Item number one. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve a contract between the city of Waterbury and J.A. Rosa Construction LLC in the amount of three hundred and forty three thousand dollars for one exchange environmental remediation, estimated by David Simpson, Director of Public Works. Can you get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Weaver, seconded by Alderman Martinez McCarthy. Discussion. Alderman Alsop.
Yes, I had some questions. Uh, one exchange place is not an old building by any means in that we're gonna find tons of asbestos, lead, paint, and all those other nasty things that we have lurking around. This is a fairly new building that was built, my recollection is after these things were outlawed already. How much remediation do we expect to find there?
Uh, David Simpson, Director of Public Works. So through KBE and consultants, the areas that, excuse me, that are being addressed were investigated. We are doing floors one, two, four, five, and six. Floor number three is fully occupied at this point. This includes light ballast carpeting that will need to be taken up and, um, and there were three others and some asbestos, all done by professionals with, you know, their professional opinion of what needs to be done. There is a consent owner control contingency should it be needed. So KBE and we've reviewed the documents are confident that we've addressed the environmental issues on those floors.
So we shouldn't see any big, heavy change orders and scary things here because it's uh, not that old.
Alderman, we would hope not. Our professionals, including KBE, are confident that they've public.
Okay, I just wanted to get that question answered. Thank you.
Anything else, Alderman?
No.
Further discussion? Here, let's take a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Alsop.
Yes.
Alderman Cavalo.
Yes.
Alderman Dorso.
Yes.
Alderman Hunter.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Martinez McCarthy.
Yes.
Alderman Mosley.
Yes.
Alderman Newjame.
Yes.
Alderman Rinaldi.
Yes.
Alderman Rodriguez.
Yeah.
Alderman Salvio.
Yes.
Alderman Taladine.
Yes.
Alderman Weaver.
Yes.
Alderman Zimmerman.
Yes.
Alderman D.G. Ovencarlo.
Yes.
Fourteen yes, one no.
Okay, the ayes have it. The motion carries and item number one is passed. Respect item number two.
You have one no.
No, he said yes.
Alderman Alsop, do you say yes or no?
I said yes.
Oh, yeah, okay.
He said one. He said yes, yes.
I do agree sometimes after I get an answer.
Just let the record show that, uh, the roll call vote was unanimous. Okay, with respect to item number two, Chair would recognize, uh, Alderman Tajaldeen, the Chair of the Intergovernmental Committee.
Item number two, your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve a contract between the city of Waterbury and Silk Town Roofing in the amount of six hundred and six hundred and twenty six hundred and twenty one thousand seventy five dollars for one exchange exterior and site improvements, estimated by David Simpson, Director of Public Works. Can you get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Weaver, seconded by Alderman Martinez McCarthy. Any discussion?
Yes.
Alderman Alsop.
I have a question. I I looked through as much as I could that contract and I did not see a square footage or anything like that on this contract. And I did attempt to find the RFP and was unsuccessful yesterday and today of finding that RFP for God to get an idea of what it was and how much it was gonna cost us. So could you answer those questions?
Sure. David Simpson, Director of Public Works. Again, this was help this was developed with the assistant assistance of KBE. It's a project manager for the city of Waterbury on that facility. There may not be square footage of the area. There were areas identified and were pointed out specifically during a walkthrough that both vendors were in. There are different areas of the roof, particularly above the sixth floor, that are causing water intrusion. So it's not necessarily every the whole roof on that sixth floor. There's sections. So that's probably why there was not.
Okay, so it's basically it's basically a repair versus a replacement.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. That was my one and only question on that. Thank you.
Further questions? Alderman Rodriguez.
So if it's a repair, couldn't we get a better price to do the whole roof by the at that point?
Again, Alderman, the whole roof, I can only surmise that it would be dramatically more expensive. This was based on our the professional input from the project manager the city has hired.
Um, with that said, how do we have an idea how long how how many years that roof have been set, you know, put in?
I think primarily the entire roof is the that age of the building, which is thirty to forty years.
Okay, so we don't have any person here from KBE, right, at this point? We don't have anyone representing the.
There is not. Is there a question that maybe I can answer for you or?
It's just in a way that, you know, we're asking this amount of money, but as my colleague said, it's a repair instead of a I was thinking it was gonna be a whole roof change instead of a repair. But, you know, I just wanted to get a price, a better understanding of the pricing of both the completion completion of the roof or the repair, if it was necessary to do the roof completely because we don't want to come back another two years and said, hey, we already repaired one side, so now we gotta repair another half, you know?
So Alderman, that section of the roof that's in there is a replacement. It is not it. It's not a repair of that section.
So we're saying that we are not gonna come back in two or three years, say, hey, now we have another side of that roof that we need to repair or replace?
Not in that section of the roof.
Okay, thank you.
Further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Alderman Alsop.
Yes.
Alderman Cavalo.
Yes.
Alderman Dorso.
Yes.
Alderman Hunter.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Martinez McCarthy.
Yes.
Alderman Mosley.
Yes.
Alderman Newjame.
Yes.
Alderman Rinaldi. Alderman Rodriguez.
Yes.
Alderman Salvio.
Yes.
Alderman Taladine.
Yes.
Ald Alderman Weaver.
Yes.
Alderman Zimmerman.
Yes.
Alderman D.G. Ovencarlo.
Yes.
Fifteen approved.
Okay, the ayes have it. The motion carries and item number two is approved. With respect to item number eleven, Chair would recognize Alderman Tajaldeen, the Chair of the Intergovernmental Committee.
Item number eleven. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve a professional services contract for design and construction documents of the rehabilitation and renovation of the historic Chase Building under RFP number eight two eight seven between the city of Waterbury and Friar Architect, Inc., as submitted by Ronald Casella, Vice President of Operations and Construction, WDC. Can you get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Weaver, seconded by Alderman Martinez McCarthy. Discussion. Alderman Alsop.
Yes, given the age of that building and the amount of money that we're spending to get a, um, service contract for the design and construction, my question is, two point four million dollars, how thorough and how confident are we going to be after this evaluation and design that we're not going to be seeing change order after change order because, oh my God, that light bulb had to be changed and we didn't know it?
So a part of our design phase with the nine disciplines that we have for this building, uh, there's major parts of exploratory work prior as they're doing designs and also in their prices to do exploratory work where we're opening up walls, ceilings, and floors. So there's no guesswork. We made sure when we put this into bid documents that exploratory work was major importance for this project. Um, so we have nine disciplines, uh, just not an architect. Uh, we have the architect, we have civil engineering, we have structural design, mechanical, electric, plumbing, sprinkler, environmental, and also exploratory work from a contractor will come in to open up areas, walls, and ceilings. So it's not just one Friar architect. Uh, there's nine individuals for that two point four million on thirty million dollar project approximate. That's around eight percent, uh, which is the going rate for architectural firms. Um, but to answer your question, Jack, is that we put the bid form together, we wanted to make sure that the exploratory work was gonna get into the weeds of making sure how we're gonna get from one end of the building to the other, including the importance of the sprinklers, uh, electrical duck work room because it's an existing building. Uh, so again, earlier I spoke about renovation versus a new project where, you know, you have an open canvas here and you do what you want. We're we're in an area where we have to do certain things to be able to make this building work, and that's what the expense is when you're doing a renovation job.
Okay, I I will say I looked through the contract and the scope of work. I was impressed that it seemed like it was going to be pretty thoroughly looked at. My concern is that it's documented enough so that when a contractor comes in to bid on a certain thing, we don't wind up with a bunch of surprises later on. That's my big concern because that seems to be the norm.
So what we do at WDC is we we sit in all the design meetings as they take as they take shape from conceptual schematic design, design development. They just don't have free rein of what they're drawing. We're in our weekly or two week design meetings. So as the pen to the pencil to the paper, we look at all of what's going on, including the design, whether what they're putting inside to the building. So when those drawings are done, it's not like we're blinded and just looking at them. Every step of the way, we look at these drawings as they're taking shape. Um, and we have a lot of input for that, uh, in the design. So as those drawings are, once those drawings are completed, uh, my staff completely knows what's going on from every inch of that building. And we know if there's gonna be hiccups that we talk about that in the design stage. So we're not blinded going into this by no means. Um, so that's that's how we set this project up.
My my paranoia comes from having served on building committees with the school systems and stuff, and they find walls that they didn't know were there. I don't know how, but they did. And, you know, things that I think Stevie Wonder would have discovered, but our architects didn't. So I'm hoping that the scope of work that I saw in your contract is going to prevent.
I will be very confident with you, Jack, that we are watching every step of the way as they're as they're designing this job.
Thank you. That's I needed that confidence. Thank you.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Hearing none. I'll take a roll call.
Thank you.
Alderman Alsop.
Yes.
Alderman Alderman Cavalo.
Yes.
Alderman Dorso.
Yes.
Alderman Hunter.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Martinez McCarthy.
Yes.
Alderman Mosley.
Yes.
Alderman Newjame.
Yes.
Alderman Rinaldi.
Yes.
Alderman Rodriguez.
Yes.
Alderman Salvio. I'm sorry, Alderman Salvio.
Yes.
Alderman Taladine.
Yes.
Alderman Weaver.
Yes.
Alderman Zimmerman.
Yes.
Alderman D.G. Ovencarlo.
Yes.
Fifteen approved.
Okay, the ayes have it. And item number eleven is approved with respect to standing. Uh, the Chair would recognize Alderman Michael Savio, the Chair of the Finance Committee.
Your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve the Director of Finance to make refunds to taxpayers representing overpayments of tax bills in the amount of twenty seven thousand, three hundred and ninety one dollars and thirteen cents, as submitted by Frank A. Caruso Jr., CCMC Revenue Collection Manager.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Dorso, seconded by Alderman Mosley. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Ayes have it. The motion carries and the refunds are approved. Um, that is our business for the evening. Before we get to the good of the order, I want to remind everybody that next Monday, March thirty first at six P M., it will be the mayor's budget presentation for the year two twenty, uh, two thousand twenty five, two thousand twenty six budget. So that'll be March thirty first, six P M. in this building. We will be announcing a public hearing, uh, just so you guys know and be prepared for it, uh, before the Alderman meeting on April seventh. So we have a earlier scheduled public hearing for five thirty. We'll be scheduling a public hearing for the budget, our first one, uh, before that meeting. So with that being said, anything for the good of the order? Alderman Mosley.
Yes, thank you, uh, for recognition, Mr. President. Um, I know a couple of years ago, the Nagatuck Valley governments, uh, began working with the city and doing a traffic calming study. And I was just asking if we can maybe have an update in the next couple of months just to see, um, where they are and what our plans are, um, for the as we go into the warmer spring and summer months.
Sure, we'll reach out to, uh, Mr. Kavanaugh.
Thank you.
Get some, I believe it's almost done. From what he was telling us, it is almost done. So we'll get the word out and have him hopefully come in and speak with us.
Thank you.
Anything else? Alderman Alsop.
Yes, I'd like to put in my regular request to find out what's going on with the properties we bought. Uh, St. Mary's Sacred Heart and what's going on with the exempted properties in Waterbury. Uh, been received and placed on file. It's gonna be brought up at every meeting as far as I know until I get some answers. I will commend the mayor. He spoke to the East End Community Club the other night, and I got more information that night about what was going on than I've gotten sitting here as an Alderman. And I still don't have the answers to all my questions, uh, such as how much rent are we collecting and what's it costing us to maintain these buildings while nothing's happening? Why hasn't there been a closing on the Sacred Heart properties that were rushed to be purchased? Uh, we're waiting.
Understood. I know that the St. Mary's is there's a RFP out for St. Mary's. I believe they had a few bidders. Sacred Heart, obviously, uh, I believe the the contract or the lease has gone to Renaissance and, uh, they are working on that. I understand it's taking some time. Uh, so again, we'll reach out to our, I believe, our assessor might have just came back today. He was out on medical and we'll speak to him about the, uh, when the properties come off that are nonprofit. I have reached out, obviously, you every meeting we reach out and we hopefully get an answer. So hopefully by the next meeting, we'll have some more information for you, rock solid information for you. All right. Thank you, Alderman Alsop. Alderman Rodriguez.
Just, uh, I just want to know if, uh, we have anything about the Waterbury Hospital, uh, taxes that we are trying to collect. If anything has been, everything is stopped. I know the mayor spoke in the news, but.
So as you know, the hospital is currently in bankruptcy. So all of that is under the control of the bankruptcy court at this point. We're owed about twenty two million dollars in taxes. They haven't paid taxes since two thousand twenty three. In two thousand twenty three, we were working with them because we expected fully that they were gonna close with Yale. And as you know, doing real estate, that typically in those cases, as part of the true of the closing, you get your taxes back. So we were moving in that direction. Um, obviously, uh, last year, the the issues with Yale then grew with the closing didn't occur. Uh, and last year, they ended up in bankruptcy. So as of today, the total amount owed to the city is about twenty two million dollars. It's fully within the control of the bankruptcy court to decide how the money gets parsed. I can tell you a couple of things. One is that the bankruptcy judge has made it clear, and I agree with this, fundamentally, as much as we want the taxes, I think the second piece is equally or more important. She's made it clear that everything she does is going to be geared towards making sure the hospitals stay open because we need them. Um, there is no question that one hospital in the city would be disastrous. Uh, we need the two hospitals to remain open. So I can also tell you that as of today, in order to keep that hap- So I can also tell you that as of today, in order to keep that happening, the bankruptcy court has approved 100 million dollars in post-bankruptcy borrowing for the hospital and I can tell you that that will be prior to anything else. Anything post-bankruptcy that is spent or incurred is going to become prior to everything else. So that loan moves ahead of us. There's other things that in the scheme of things end up ahead of you. So as we work through this, it becomes, you know, we'll see what's happening. We have a lawyer out of Texas who's advocating for us within the bankruptcy court. You may have seen that in the article as well, trying to put in protections to make sure we're protected, but at the end of the day, there's so much money that's going to be available and we'll see where that comes out. But we do, you know, we do have people looking out for us down there, local Texas Council as well. They've also, I believe in the last week, approved a motion to allow a sale of the hospitals in Connecticut to go forward and that is hopefully, they'll put it out, they'll get the bidders in relatively quickly. They, they are looking to have, if it moves the way they hope it will, that we'll have a closing by June, we should have somebody in place. So hopefully on the go-forward basis, well, the taxes are going to become less of an issue because my expectation is it's going to become a nonprofit, which means that we'll be part of the pilot as opposed to taxes. So that, the tax issue is really going to be the accrued taxes with the for-profit that is out there. The other piece to keep in mind is, as you know, the hospital is in bankruptcy under prospect, but the property is owned by MPT through a lease, which means that the MPT is not a, is not in the bankruptcy at this point. They have indicated to the court that they will allow the sale of the underlying real estate to go along with the sale of the hospitals in Connecticut. There had been part of what was holding up the approval of the sale was the negotiation over how much they would get out of that lease. The lease requires that the hospital, that prospect pay the taxes, it's a triple net lease in effect that's on the property, pay the taxes and that's sort of where MPT was coming from, is that the hospital should be responsible for the taxes. Our perspective is you make whatever deal you want, it's who pays it, you owe it to us as the property owner. So all of that is in the works, it continues to move forward, but the paramount goal, it appears with the bankruptcy judge, the paramount goal that we would have as well is to keep the hospitals going. They have struggled in the past with the bankruptcy in place, I believe they're currently paying their ongoing bills, the doctors, the nurses are getting paid, which had been an issue, the suppliers are being paid. And I would say that while I understand concerns that are out there, I, the, the folks who work in the hospital, from the doctors to the nurses to the interns to the people serving the food, the people moving the beds around, are all continuing to perform services at the highest level possible. They're very committed people, they're our neighbors and our friends and we know who they are, they continue to do that. Waterbury Hospital remains a viable hospital, it is a good option for people who have to go to the hospital. So right now, we're going to continue on with that. I fully expect the sale will go through. I believe it is a valuable asset, especially with the prior issues hung, being taken care of in the bankruptcy going forward. So, but it is up in the air and ultimately, there's no guarantees on how any of it happens, it's all going to be in the, in the hands of a bankruptcy court judge going forward. So as a former lawyer, you know, I like courts, but the worst place to be is putting your fate in the hands of a judge in a court, so, but that's the nature of bankruptcy, so.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I have a question.
Mayor, I actually have a question. I'm sure, on the 100 million, was there a timeframe of how long that would sustain him, keep him open?
Months, not years, so, you know, they may be, so hopefully, hopefully the sale will go through, we'll get a closing in June. The other piece to that that I should tell you is, the legislature did pass and the Governor did sign this year, a bill to expedite the CON process, the Certificate of Need process, as you may recall. Part of what screwed this whole deal up was that the CON took significantly longer than it reasonably should have. The legislation would say because this hospital had a CON already done and it allows that in the case of a bankruptcy, if you have a purchaser who's taking it out of bankruptcy, that the CON process will take only 60 days. So from when they get there to close, to continue operating, it will, you know, be 60 days. So it's a much more expedited process because the groundwork has already been laid and they can use the prior CON materials to get to this one.
Thank you, Alderman Alsop.
Yes, could, could you explain, is there a difference, is there two taxes being owed? One is on the property itself, the buildings, and the other on the, the physical?
There's real property taxes and personal property taxes.
Right.
Those are, those are the two kinds, those two total 22 million dollars. So all of the equipment that's in the hospital is taxable and the real estate is taxable.
So the real estate taxes are not in a bankruptcy situation at this point?
They're part of MPT and that's a mixed bag of what it is, right? The real, the personal property, which is owned by the hospital.
Right.
Is part of the bank.
Which is the larger?
The, the real property is the larger portion of it at this point, so. And, and to layer on top of this, that as part of the 2022 assessment, Waterbury Hospital or Prospect Holdings has an appeal pending in court to say that the assessment is too high and so that case, we had actually, when we were going into the sale, been negotiating potentially a way to settle that, but once it went into bankruptcy, all bets were off from our perspective. So that is scheduled to go to trial in June of this year if it continues on the course. It is, at this point, being scheduled in June and the way the court in Waterbury works when it comes to tax appeals, I expect it to go forward. They're very, very reluctant to give extensions once they're there. So, but yes, that, that's a good point. There's two, these, the taxes are made up of two pieces, real and personal, but the, as I said, MPT is indicated to the court, it's part of this whole deal, that they will allow the property to be sold as part of the, so the new owners will own the hospital and the real property once again, so.
Would we have the ability to put a lien, we should have a lien on the?
We have, we have liens on the property. The city has done everything it needs to do to perfect.
Okay.
All of its liens in this case. The problem that you have is while that makes us a secure creditor in some ways, we're still in bankruptcy court. So you can only get, you can only, depending on what all the money comes into at the end, you can only get so much of it back potentially. So we're fighting to get everything back, don't get me wrong, I'm just, you know, I want people to be aware of the situation that we're in.
I'm, I'm just wondering if there's a place where we would become the landlord of the hospital operations if we needed, it's the only way we can recoup anything out of it?
Yeah, I, that, that I don't, I mean, that's somewhere off into the, into the future if it gets to that, I'm hoping it doesn't come to that and I, you know, I just don't think that's a place that we want to ultimately be, so, but.
I'm not advocating and I'm just wondering.
But I think, I don't think you're going to find someone at this point who's going to be willing to buy the hospitals the way pros, don't forget, Prospect Holdings, MPT, this was all part of a big scheme really, right? Somebody told me I shouldn't use the word scheme because it sounds bad.
Ben of Steve.
This was a scheme because it was bad, but I don't think going forward that anybody in their right mind is going to buy Waterbury Hospital if they also don't control the underlying real estate. That's an awful place to be, as you see, and I don't think it's going to happen. So if they don't get sold together, I don't think there's any chance of us, there being a landlord for the hospital in the future, so.
Further discussion? All right, sorry, excuse me, it was fairly Good of the Order, but we got talking, so Alderman Zimmerman.
I just had another two things for Good of the Order.
Sure.
If you don't mind. You mentioned an RFP for St. Mary's, can you just elaborate on what, what we're looking to do?
Mayor?
Yeah, so if you, if you may recall that we picked up St. Mary's like two years ago to be sure that we could, you know, see what the ultimate use was going to be. Last year, the Department of Housing has a program that allows, that will fund housing that is dedicated primarily to essential healthcare workers. And so the Commissioner was interested in trying to get that program moving. They contacted us here in the city and said, you know, we've got money, if you've got an interest and a place to go. We said St. Mary's, right near St. Mary's Hospital, not very far from Waterbury Hospital, would be perfect for that. So we, we worked on putting together an RFP, we put the RFP out, there were a couple of proposers who came in, there's one that has been sort of chosen to continue on with negotiations. That developer has been working with the Department of, this would all come through the Department of Housing, I mean, I said economic development, I was wrong, it was the Department of Housing. And so there is a portion that can be funded depending on how many of the units you'd set aside for healthcare workers. I think we could probably do most of them for healthcare workers here and then there may be other funding if you do other sort of affordable or workforce housing that may not be restricted just to healthcare workers. So the goal is likely to reconvert all of the existing buildings into housing units and in addition, there's the parking lot that's out by East Main Street there that had been a building that came down as a parking lot, would be fundamentally a brand-new building, I don't want to say a high-rise, but it'd be a six-story building that would also get some units in there. So I think, what is the number right now, about 60 units do we know for St. Mary's? A little bit, somewhere between 60 and 90 units, I think, is what would go in there and it would be a mix. We're pushing to have less studio apartments, to have some one-bedrooms and more two-bedrooms and even potentially some three-bedrooms so they could be for families. So the idea would be to make it affordable to people. The Commissioner has made clear that she's looking to make sure that while it'd be open, anybody who works in healthcare, that it would be pushed primarily and affordable enough so that people who aren't necessarily doctors, but maybe nurses, nursing assistants and other people in the hospital, even working in food service or, you know, the custodial services would be able to afford to move into those as well and that they would be big enough for people who have families to utilize them as well.
Great, thank you. It's exciting.
Anything else for the Good of the Order?
Yes, thank you, sorry.
In the future, the Good of the Order is going to be for the Good of the Order.
I know, Memorial Day.
We're not going to, we're not going to continue questioning.
You know what, I'll be willing to do if we could go forward, when the Mayor, if I don't have anything to say, you guys have questions, I'll come up and answer your questions.
We're excited you're here.
That's dangerous, Mayor, that's dangerous.
All right, Memorial Day this year is May 26th, it's on a Monday. Our Memorial Day Parade for the city will be on Sunday, May 25th. I'm going to chair, co-chair the parade again this year. We are in need of volunteers on Freight Street, so if you're organizations or if you want to march in the parade, that's wonderful and also I want to let everyone know that we're looking for volunteers to help organize the groups on Freight Street before kickoff. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Hearing none, Alderman Dorso. There a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, there we are adjourned.